I officially call this order, call to order the special meeting of the vacancy nominating committee. Good evening to everyone. I'm excited that so many individuals are interested in serving the citizens of the 2nd District. I will start by introducing the nominated committee and my council colleague in attendance. I am the chair. I'm city councilwoman Shannon Snead and I represent the 13th District. This is Zeke Cohen from the 1st District and he represents the 1st District.
Thank you.
Are there any other council members in the back? Eric Costello, my colleague Eric Costello, represent the 11th District. So now I'm going to call the other names of the committee. Barbara Jackson representing Frankfurt Improvement Association. Wynta Downer representing Sedona Community Association. William Pete Moody from Gardenville Neighborhood Association. Chat Brown, Brown Tisdale Incorporated. Rita Cruz representing Bella Edison Community Association. Kate Cher Adams representing KS Solutions. Michael Karasik representing Glenham Bell Hill Community Association. Erica Mullen representing East Rosemount Community Association. Patrick Morgan representing Hollentown Community Association. William Murphy from the Frankfurt Estates in the Homeowners Association. I think I got them all. As required by law, notice has been provided to inform the public of this hearing. It has also been described the criteria for this position that requirements are required to fill. Candidate must be a citizen of the United States, be at least 18 years old, and a registered voter, and a resident of the 2nd District for at least a year. Applicants were required to send in copies of their resume that list their addresses by Friday, May 24th at 5:00 PM to Mr. Larry Green, Office of the Council Services, who's to my right, by the way. This committee will interview the candidates in an open forum. Before I begin, I want to go over the rules of procedure for this evening's session. The committee will proceed this evening by calling the candidates forward individually in an alphabetical order. Each will be given two minutes for an opening statement and 60 seconds to answer five questions each, and one minute for a closing statement. The questions were generated by this committee and were given to each candidate in advance of the hearing. Time will be kept on the laptop with a countdown clock on the screen to your right and it will beep when your time has elapsed. Once everyone has given their testimony, the committee will then discuss the candidates afterwards if the committee feels it has heard enough about the applicants. It will proceed with the vote. Twenty-one, 22 individuals applied, but 21 individuals are only here tonight because one candidate just pulled out. Here are the candidates we will be hearing from this evening. Ronald Belly, Chanel Branch, Tremblin M. Butler, Glenda Curtis, Christina Delgado, Cody Dorsey, Tamara Dunn, Wesley Hawkins, Mark Hunter III, Eric James, Cynthia Johnson, Rodney Leach, Camille Leola, Danielle McCray, Nicholas Miles, Sharita Obera, Casey Richardson, Bobby Joe Sims, Dexter Walker, Gary Williams, and Randy Williams. With that being said, we will now move forward with the public interviews. The first candidate, please come forward. Good evening and thank you for being here. You may now take up to two minutes to give us an opening statement.
Thank you. My name is Ronald Nathaniel Belly. I am 71 years old. I am a father, a grandfather, and a great-grandfather. I've been involved in community activities since, well, for 72, roughly since 1972. I've been mentored by people like Tim Conway, Lena Boone, basically those folks that were leaders on the west side. As you may or may not can tell, I was raised on the west side in what I like to call the village of Sandtown. And the block that I lived in was one that pretty much all the folks that lived there had the authority to crack me upside the head if I did something wrong. They seen me throwing stuff on the street, they pretty much put me in my place. I've been here in the 2nd District for roughly about, for roughly 14 years. I've had the pleasure of working with community associations such as Bella Edison where I worked with Mr. Tony Dawson and Edie Taylor. I was fortunate enough to put together a project with the Department of Public Works under Val Ucrema, who allowed me one roll-off per month. And I took that roll-off for about five years all over the 2nd District as well as on the west side. Currently, I have a project that I am the director of called Operation Safe and Clean. And for the last three years, I've been on the west side working with groups such as Holland Park West, Park Heights Renaissance. And what I do, I serve as an advocate for them. I search and do research to find out what kind of resources are available to them. And the city has been a very good working partner for me. I've had the opportunity, well, I've had a great opportunity to work with quite a few people.
Thank you, Mr. Belly. We're going to have the first question be asked from starting down on my right-hand side if you can ask the first question.
My vision is for the 2nd District is to plant a seed, a seed of unity because if we don't learn to work together, we're not going to get very much accomplished. I have the opportunity of working with homeless people that come into a McDonald's on White Avenue looking for help to get into a drug program or ID, and they come hunting me down for that kind of help. So my vision is unity because we need each other to make it work.
What are the top two priorities facing the 2nd District?
For me, it's crime and crime. Again, it's, we're talking about unity. People, I don't know of how many people in here actually know who their neighbors are. I know maybe of a block of 80 people, I know maybe roughly 20 of them. Most of us don't get much done simply because of the fact we don't work together. And unity, again, is a key factor in getting things accomplished in the district.
Thank you.
Hi, Mr. Belly. I have question three here. What should the city do to address public safety in the 2nd District? And how should the mandates of the US Department of Justice consent decree factor into this?
For public safety, we need to re-mandate what is the necessities of different agents, agencies, especially with the police department. They need to write tickets for violations such as up the street for me. Every night, there's a car parked out there, double parked for maybe three or four hours. And you call and there's no response to it. With the people that work for sanitation, they need to put the trash cans back in the yards. They need to close the leads so it don't get filled with water. We actually really need to re-mandate what the duties of these individuals are.
Thank you.
Mr. Belly, I have question four for you. As a council member, what would your position be on any legislation that would create mandatory minimum sentences for criminal offenses?
Well, first of all, I would really have to be able to take a look at what the offense is. I know this is a little bit on the personal side, but I am a recovering alcoholic of 34 years. And I know, I know that there are lots of things I don't remember that happened the day before. And it's, it's very important that you have the full story, not just part of the story. So it has to be reviewed by individual cases. I mean, really reviewed, not just brushed over.
Question I have is...
Oh, excuse me. My name is William Pete Moody. I'm the president of Gardenville Neighborhood Association and I have 219 homes in my area. I've been doing this work since 1990. So I know a lot and met a lot of people. But one of the things is, I asked is, what do you feel the challenges that we have in our neighborhood?
Well, some of the challenges that we're faced is the homelessness. There are many, many people that are homeless and they running around looking for a place to go. And it's not talked about much, but it is a much bigger problem than what is being looked at. The second thing is youth activities. We don't have many activities going on that draws the interest of the young people. And we need to take a look at what to do with these people. I have the opportunity to work with Northeast Police District who has been a partner with me for roughly about eight or nine years. We camp out kids, we take and do the police explorers, and now we're even encouraging young people to become cadets. But we're not, we're just not reaching everybody. And we need to work a little bit harder at finding a way to dialogue with these young folks.
Thank you, Mr. Belly. You answered all five of the questions. Now, if you could just take a minute to give us a closing statement, that would be great.
I'm here today because I believe that over the years that, and by the way, I've been involved in community since about 1988. And what the involvement that I have had being an Indian, other words, rolling my sleeve up and helping to make positive things happen in community is something that can be beneficial to the council. I thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Belly. Thank you. We'll next have, and before we move on to the next one, I just want to acknowledge another councilman that's here from the 12th District, Councilman Robert Stokes, who's in the back. He doesn't hear me, but we know we acknowledge him. Wave, councilman. Next we'll have Chanel Branch.
Good evening. Thank you for being here. Thank you for having me.
So if you just want to start with your opening statement, that would be great.
Okay. My name is Chanel Branch and I currently live in the 2nd District. I am currently the chair of the 45th Legislative State Central Committee. I have been in a community, working in the community since the age of 14. I've worked along the side of multiple delegates and as well as council members. I worked in the community helping with the youth as well as helping feed the homeless, giving away school supplies, multiple community events. I've been doing giveaways with turkeys or anything for the holidays. I'm just a really active person in my community.
I'm going to go right to our committee and let them pick up on the first question.
Good evening.
Describe your vision for the 2nd District.
Once again, good evening. Describe your vision for the 2nd District.
My vision for the 2nd District would be to see new and existing businesses thrive and grow, creating job opportunities for those in the 2nd District, as well as maintaining affordable housing and also having housing in livable standards, not having as many vacant homes or businesses that are boarded up. In addition to that, also, my vision would be to see the crime continue to reduce in
Good evening.
Good evening.
What are the two top priorities facing the 2nd District?
I would have to say that would be crime and also lack of job opportunities. Hello.
As a council member, what would your position be on legislation that could create mandatory minimum sentences for criminal offenses?
Typically, I would, I would disagree with it. However, I would have to see the legislation in front of me to be able to give a fair judgment of the legislation in front of me. However, when it comes to handgun crimes with handguns, being a mother of a son that was murdered, I feel differently about, about those particular crimes. But however, to be fair, I would have to see the legislation in front of me. Welcome.
Good evening.
Good evening.
The council is in the midst of the budget process. What are your budget priorities and how do you think they are currently reflected in the budget?
I would have to say the two that I would focus on would be community development and also funds for crime prevention because currently, currently we don't have a lot of funds for those particular areas, including, for me, a passion would be the crime prevention piece because that is one of the top priorities for me in the 2nd District. I've had the opportunity to go and testify to bring funds to Baltimore City in the amount of $3.6 million to bring funds to have 10 safe streets here in Baltimore City, as well as an additional $5 million that have come to Baltimore City already that I've testified for, for crime prevention programs. So I would like to see if Baltimore City would be able to also provide funding around crime prevention type of programs to be able to help reduce the crime within the 2nd District as well as the city of Baltimore.
That, perfect timing. So you can, if you want to take this time to give us some closing statements, that would be great.
I would just like to say thank you for the opportunity and that's it.
Thank you. Thank you. The next person we'll have is Tremblin Butler. Mr. Butler? No, Mr. Butler? We'll come back, we'll go to Glenda Curtis.
I'm sorry.
Good evening, panel.
Good evening.
My name is Glenda Curtis. I am a mother of three boys ages 34, 23, and 12, and I recently adopted a great niece. I'm a lifelong Baltimore City resident, been providing services in Baltimore City for the past 25 years. I have a community outreach program that provides services for children, families, youth, all across the city. The Outreach Center was born out of my desire to see some real changes in the city. I've worked with various agencies and organizations and wanted to take an in-depth look on how I can impact some of the needs of the city. I'm not happy with some of the things that I see going on in the city and think that I could make some real improvement with some of the things that I've seen.
We want to jump right into questions and so we'll start with the first question down
Describe your vision for the 2nd District.
My vision for the 2nd District involves a more expedient process to address some of the housing code issues, ensuring increased patrol to address a lot of the crime that's, that goes on in the 2nd District, and more community involvement among the younger residents in the communities. For the most part, when I go to community meetings, there are older adults at the meetings and I would just like to see more younger residents contribute and provide their ideas and their vision for the community.
Hi. What are the, your top two priorities facing the 2nd District?
My top two priorities facing the 2nd District is crime and housing code violations.
Thank you. Along with that, we want to know, what should the city do to address public safety in our 2nd District? And how should the mandates of the US Department of Justice consent decree factor into this? What you're thinking on that?
First of all, the city should look into how the size of the district impacts the crime and how it's tallied up. There also needs to be an increased patrol, increase in patrol officers within the district because of its size. And it's my, it's my understanding that there is an imbalance in recruitment and attrition. We need to be able to recruit enough officers to cover the large size in the district and we need to be able to maintain those officers within the department. And as far as the consent decree, there's this big push for constitutional policing and there's a lot of pushback with the consent decree and police officers really accepting what has to be done for the police to interact better with the community. So there just needs to be an all-around unified effort so that the police can do their work and the community can feel safe and protected.
So, how you doing?
Hi.
As a council member, what would your, as a council member, what would your position be on any legislation that would create mandatory minimum sentences for criminal offenses?
I would like to look at that from a case-by-case basis. And that's not to say that leniency should be given for a first-time offender because some crimes, a first time, you know, could be the worst offense. I just think that we kind of can look at the background of the individual and just look at the crime committed. Certainly, there should be punishment for crimes committed, but it should be looked at on a case-by-case basis, basis, I'm sorry.
Thank you. Number five. Number five, question number five.
The council is in the midst of a budget process. You excuse me because I'm not very good. I'm 69 years old and I'm not very good in hearing, so I'm kind of slow-moving, okay? But I do grasp everything. But anyway, number five. The council is in the midst of the budget process. What are your budget priorities and how do you think they are currently reflected in the budget?
My budget priorities would involve public safety and education infrastructure. First of all, public safety, one of the things that we need to do and look at is how we can make the police department and have the city control the police department as opposed to the state. And being able to divert more monies into, divert more monies into beefing up patrol and ensuring that constitutional policing is happening, and also the housing stock.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Would you like to, since you have all the questions, to wrap us up in the closing statements?
I'd like to fill the vacancy for reasons being, I am a resident of the district, I've provided services on behalf of the council president's office for the past two years, but I've also provided services all over Baltimore City for the past 25 years. I've seen the city in its decline. I think my education, my experience, my background would give a lot to what the city needs at this time. I think that we need to breed a new generation and new, of new thinking, new priorities, and kind of do away with old politics. I think that I bring a lot to that because of the work that I've done over the past 25 years.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening.
Good evening. Thank you for being here.
Thank you for allowing me to be here.
Pull your microphone closer so we can see.
Okay. My name is Christina Delgado. I am a community organizer, a community advocate, an artist, an educator, and a mother. I'm originally from New York City and have lived in Baltimore since 2004. I purchased my home in the 2nd District in 2006. I've been an educator for 15 years, a teaching artist for almost 10, and a professional organizer within the district, Bella Edison, both 2 and 13, for nearly four years. I've been a vigilant and dedicated leader within the district and Baltimore City and I'm excited for this opportunity.
Just remember to speak closer into the mic. Pull it closer to your, move it to the side.
I'm so sorry.
That's okay. That's okay. We're going to start with the first question.
Okay.
And so...
Yes. Good evening. Describe your vision for the 2nd District.
I'm sorry?
Describe your vision for the 2nd District.
Yeah. It's, my vision is a hidden gem uncovered, a vibrant metropolitan destination, place for locals, visitors, a place where many can see themselves and their families call home. call home.
What are the two top priorities facing the Second District?
In my opinion, the two top priorities are public safety, which is defined as crime, lighting, trash, dirty alleys, and vacant housing, and also recreation to include youth-related activities and resources, activation of parks and green spaces, and activation of the main street and main business corridors within the district.
Good evening, Ms. Delgado.
Good evening.
As a, let's see, we're three. What should, what should the city do to address public safety in the Second District, and how should the mandates of the U.S. Department of Justice consent decree factor into this?
So, community policing definitely is a strategy that the Baltimore City Police Department under the consent decree needs to be defined more. This process needs to include more community groups and resident leaders, not only in written and qualitative data phase, but in implementation of programs and events that will connect and build trust between both entities, police and community. Community leaders should definitely be considered to be hired by the police department for this community policing issue, to be sure that this is done to the best of its ability. Also, under the consent decree, technology and facilities for police department are unacceptable and need to be updated and brought to the twenty-first century standards, so that police are provided with tools that they need to be more efficient, effective, and accountable. I'd also advocate for individuals to understand that community policing is not just a police and community relations issue, but it's also being accountable for your community.
Okay. As a council member, what would your position be on any legislation that would create mandatory minimum sentences for criminal offenses?
Just like many of the people that have come up, it's kind of hard to sort of talk about that without knowing the legislation and having more context, but my first reaction would be to say that definitely would be to consider the piece of legislation, the type of criminal offense of the person being convicted, along with their criminal background and upbringing. I would think, have they received diversion program services? Would they benefit from restorative justice practices?
The council is in the midst of a budget process. What are your budget priorities, and how do you think they are currently reflecting in the budget?
So, what I listed as priorities are definitely youth-related programming and resources, housing development, especially for aging population and veterans, being able to provide them sort of grants or low-interest loans to be able to upkeep the maintenance of their homes. Also, manpower, city needs more manpower and more efficient equipment to include updated computer systems, parks and trail maintenance, and upkeeping. When I looked through the budget, it was very long, so I wasn't able to kind of go through all of it. So, some of it that's been addressed is definitely updating of the systems. That seems to be a priority in the budget. I also noticed forest conservation and Baltimore Green Network was listed in the budget. However, none of the parks in our district were listed, so that would be something that I would like to be considered, and definitely capital improvements, and I noticed that that was listed in the budget as well.
Thank you for that perfect time, and again, do you want to give us some closing statements?
Sure. So, I kind of find it ironic that I'm standing before you all today, because I remember when I first moved into my home, when I was like twenty-five, I remember complaining to my mother on the phone and saying, you know, what, you know, all of these things are kind of happening, what do I do? And she's like, write a letter to your councilperson, write a letter to your congressman. I'm like, whatever, mom. And so I think it's sort of ironic that now, I think, living in one of the challenging blocks in Bella Edison has kind of brought me to full circle into this situation right now, being before this committee, so thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
The next person we'll have is Cody Dorsey.
Good evening, Madam Chair and members of the nominating committee and everyone here. I am Cody Dorsey, and I am a lifelong Baltimorean, a proud product of our city's school system, and a former chair of the Baltimore City Youth Commission, where I provided reports and advice to the mayor, the council, and the municipal agencies on topics including, including a young person on every community association board, the children's budget, and the youth curfew legislation. Also served on our city's school board, representing then eighty-four thousand public school students, and got to see up close and personal just what we need to do to improve education and youth development in this city. So, I stand here before you today because I have a deep respect for this council, and something that I hope to bring to this council, along with me, is transparency. But in the government environment, transparency must also be accompanied by honesty. And so, Councilman Scott has served us so well and so faithfully, and I want to ensure that the district is in good hands. Thank you.
We're just going to jump right into questions, so we'll go in with our first question.
Describe your vision for the Second District, please.
So, my vision is really for the residents of the district to have a quality of life, and a good quality of life, a first-class educational opportunities and facilities, a good transportation network, jobs, and being able to get to those jobs, and I want residents and all citizens of Baltimore to feel safe, and we still have a lot of work to do.
A community such as our Second District, with this one being twenty-six thousand-plus people, what are the two top priorities facing this Second District?
I think the two top priorities are definitely crime. Crime is out of control all across the city of Baltimore, and the second would be poverty. People just aren't working. They can't afford their homes, they can't afford their bills, and it leads to things where they lose hope and they lose faith in this city and in this government.
How you doing, young man?
Good evening.
What, this is the third question. What should the city do to address public safety in the Second District, and how should the mandates of the U.S. Department of Justice consent decree factor into this?
So, I think that we need to make sure that we have the first-class responder equipment, so that our police officers can respond adequately and appropriately. We need to provide adequate training for our police officers, including ensuring that there is bias-free policing. We have to get back to true community policing, where people know their police officers and their commanders in the district. We have to ensure that there is citizen oversight of our police department. But I want to go a little further for you all. I think public safety is more than policing, because we can't police our way into public safety. We have to make sure that people are employed, and we have to ensure that we are effectively countering foreign and domestic terrorism, like we see with the city right now. We're currently under a ransomware attack. We need to ensure that we are taking a holistic approach to public safety.
I have a follow-up question. I have, I wonder where does the mental health or wellness of city residents factor into your approach to the role of councilperson?
Well, I think that the councilperson for the district can definitely advocate and work closely with the mayor and the administration to ensure that there's more funding for mental health services in the district. That is definitely something that not just residents of the district, but all of the citizens of Baltimore should care about, ensuring that everyone have high mental faculties and facilities in healthcare. Thank you.
Thank you.
As a, as a member of the council, as a council member, what would your position be on any legislation that would create mandatory minimum sentences for criminal offenses?
So, mandatory minimums disproportionately affect black and brown people. I do not support mandatory minimums, and I think that judges should have discretion in their sentencing and not be bound to a mandatory term.
Good afternoon.
How are you?
The council is in the midst of the budget process. What are your budget priorities, and how do you think they are currently reflected in the budget?
So, my budget priorities are education and youth development. We have to make sure that we're funding our schools and upkeeping our facilities. We've done a lot of work with the Children and Youth Fund to invest in our children, but I think that we can go a step further to ensure that babies are born healthy and that young people have access to quality out-of-school time programs, and that we are taking a holistic approach to develop the whole child. Public safety, definitely. We have to lower crime in this city. We have to get the Baltimore Police Department to a level where, an appropriate staffing level to reduce overtime costs and get back to true community policing, transparency and performance accountability. I wholeheartedly support the work of our Inspector General to help rid our government of unnecessary corruption, and the City Smart Team to make sure that we are adopting best practices to be responsible with taxpayers' dollars. And economic development, we have to ensure that we are investing to put people back to work. You know, nothing stops a bullet like a job.
So, that concludes the questions, but if you're willing to give closing statements.
I'm Cody Dorsey, and I can work in the streets and I can work in the suites across the city and across the district to ensure that people feel as though this city is working on their behalf. You know, I first walked in this building ten years ago to my first city council meeting. I was about twelve years old, and I gained a deep admiration and respect for the institution of the city council. I've got to see up close and personal several transitions in the mayor's office, in the council president's office, and with the council, and I want to ensure that this government works every day for everyone and that the district residents of this district too feel as though that they have a voice on this council and in this building. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Cody. Thank you. We'll next have Tamara Dunn. Is Dunn here?
Hi, Ms. Dunn.
Hi.
Do you want to give us a little bit about yourself, opening statements?
So, my name is Tamara Dunn. I am a lifelong Baltimorean, a graduate of Morgan State University and University of Baltimore. I'm a former Baltimore City Youth Commissioner. I am a mom of two, and I'm also a foster parent. I have spent years developing and creating nonprofit organizations that have provided resources and services to children, youth, and families. I've done a lot of work in the district with back-to-school block parties and things like that to help the families thrive. I am also a member of the Fetal Infant Mortality Review Board with the Baltimore City Health Department, so I've done a lot of work around infant mortality. I am the maternal interviewer for that committee.
We want to just jump right into questions, so we'll go ahead and ask the first question.
Hello.
Hi.
Describe your vision for the Second District.
My vision for the Second District is a community with safer streets and more resources and services for our community, one in particular bringing back a library to the community. It's been eighteen years since that district has been without a library. I do believe that the resources that we bring into the district will eliminate some of the barriers to strengthen families and have healthier communities.
Good evening, Ms. Dunn.
Good evening.
What are your two top priorities facing the Second District?
My two top priorities are public safety and education. After speaking with countless neighbors, they have identified that there's a lot of activity that happens at Jimmy D's on the corner of Radicki and Sedonia, and there's a lot of illegal activity that happen there, so I would say public safety. Even with education and speaking to one of my neighbors who will not send his child because he feels like the city schools in that area are under-resourced.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Good evening.
Good evening.
What should the city do to address public safety in the Second District, and how should the mandates of the U.S. Department of Justice consent decree factor into this?
So, I believe that it needs to take a comprehensive approach to public safety. I think that it is more than just policing. For example, speaking to various business owners in that district and them either telling me they've been robbed or know of other business owners that have been robbed, and so they have communicated that having more lighting in the area would be beneficial and more patrolling on foot. And I do think with the consent decree, just having, the officers are obligated to build a rapport with the community in regards to that.
As a council member, what would your position be on any legislation that would create mandatory minimum sentence for criminal offenses?
So, I do believe that my district deserves to be a safe community, but I would say that I, because I don't have the legislation in front of me, it would be hard to make that decision, but no, there hasn't been any evidence that mandatory sentences actually reduce the crime in the area, so I would not be for that at this time.
So, the council's in the midst of the budget process. What are your budget priorities, and how do you think they are currently reflected in the budget?
So, my priorities would be public safety, education, and also maternal and child health. I do know that there is a high infant mortality rate in that community, and so having more maternal and child health initiatives placed in that district could eliminate that issue.
And I have something to follow up on. What suggestions or recommendations would you give to entice the parents in that Second District to get their children to attend city schools? Many of them, as you know, we know, are in the county, just across the line.
The line, right. I would say collaborating with the schools to, so that they have more initiatives for, that are more enticing for the parents to want to send their children to. I also think that organizations such as the Judy Center that's at Moravia, that helps with that as well. So, having that model program at certain schools to just entice people to want to bring their children to the school.
That concludes the question portion of this. Would you like to give closing statements?
Yes. So, I just wanted to thank you all for the opportunity. I have been doing the work in many areas within Baltimore City, and I just want the chance to improve the district like I know that it can be. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we'll have Wesley Hawkins.
How y'all doing?
How are you? If you want to give us your opening statements, if you want to take that time.
My opening statement is, I'm here for a reason. My reason is because I relate, connect, and understand the problems that the people are going through in Baltimore. Standing before you is a young man who has suffered from two drug-addict parents. I've been homeless before, I've lived in abandoned houses, I've been a foster child, and I basically come from nothing. But standing before you is a young man who also believed that we can come back from that, because I did, because it took investment. That investment that we needed, and I needed as a young youth, and people not just giving up on me. See, a lot of people gave up on me when I was young, and they passed me along, and they said I was a bad child, and they put me out of school, and they sent me to detention centers. But what Wesley Hawkins needed as a child was investment and for people to believe in me. That investment charged me and pushed me to graduate from college twice. I am a small business owner here in Baltimore. I have a mentorship program at Baltimore called the No Leader Project. I mentor kids from Baltimore to DC. I helped them do better in school. I helped them start jobs. I helped them get jobs. I give them programs that they can sit down and start their own entrepreneurship lifestyle. So, I'm standing here before you because I understand people at the smallest level and at the greatest level, because I've been on both ends. I now walk amongst the elite, but I've started at the bottom with people who are struggling every day to feed their families. I was once one of those children that didn't know where my meal, I'm sorry, my meal was coming from the next day. So, that's who Wesley Hawkins is, and I'm looking to serve our people. I'm looking to serve District Two.
All right, thank you.
Thanks for that, Mr. Hawkins. So, the first question is, describe your
So the first question is, describe your vision for the Second District.
My vision for the Second District is to improve the quality of life for all residents. That means to invest in our youth. A lot of our youth don't have jobs. A lot of our youth don't have assistance. So I work with the youth in Baltimore, and they always saying, well, Mr. Hawkins, what do we have? So the older folks say, get the youth out of the corners, but we need to invest in these youth and help them get jobs. So when I go to the schools, a lot of these youth don't know how to work on their resumes. A lot of these youth don't even know how to articulate themselves at an interview. So we need to start with soft skills and start helping build these youth in a high level. Also, we need to help work on the mental health. Give people the treatment they need that they suffer from high levels of trauma. And next, I will come through and I will help people who are strung out on drugs because they need actual assistance and not just put in these programs. If you start working on the problems that people really have at the ground base, now they can start to rebuild our community and they can be upstanding people in our society.
Okay, here we go. Number two, what are the two top priorities facing the Second District?
Second District, one, would be crime and violence. That's also, that's one. Two would be economic development and growth in our communities. I feel like one balances out the other. If you provide people in the community with economical growth so they can afford their housing, so they can afford their bills, then a lot of people won't be out here committing crime. How do you fight crime? How do you combat crime? You need to combat it with a solution instead of sending people to prison. So mine would be to focus and fight, one, crime, but also balance that out with providing economic resources for individuals to get jobs so they don't feel like they got to go to the streets. Because I understand why these people go to the streets. They go to the streets because they feel like they have no other choice.
Good evening.
How you doing?
What should the city do to address public safety in the Second District? And how should the mandates of the U.S. Department of Justice Consent Decree factor into this?
So as far as the consent decree, the consent decree is bringing a holistic approach. Holistic meaning, they trying to work with the community. So the problem is public safety. A lot of people are running and scared. They don't want to come outside. They don't want to sit on that porch. A lot of people are shooting, stabbing, and robbing each other. We need to get together as a community to fix these issues. It's not just a police problem. It's a community issue. It's bigger than just schools. It's bigger than just mental health. It's bigger than just police. So we need to have a collective approach where everybody in the community, from the young to the middle-aged to the elderly, work together to create solutions at a table that we can come to a conclusion and say, well, this is what we need. Every meeting that I go to, I hear a lot of the elderly say they are afraid to come outside and they don't want to come out their front door. Also, when I deal with the youth, the youth say, well, what do you expect us to do? So we need to actually create solutions that can actually help with these situations in our community.
As a council member, what would your position be on any legislation that would create mandatory minimum sentences for criminal offenses?
So I would say a large part of me would be opposing of it because I understand how those conditions disproportionately have a lot of black and brown people incarcerated. As serving seven years in a correctional, as a correctional officer, sergeant level, I've seen, working in the correction facility, that almost 80 to 90% of the facilities are filled with black and brown people. But also, as a person that lives in the community and I am raised in the urban community, I see all races of people coming to the hood and buy drugs, sell drugs, and commit crimes. But as a fellow, as an experienced officer, I'm sorry, as an experienced officer, I only mainly saw my own people. So I wouldn't be standing firm on any decision, but I think I would be highly opposed to it because I think people need investing. You cannot just condemn people for the circumstances and the situations that they live in. A lot of people don't just commit crimes because they were born that way. A lot of people commit crimes because of their conditions, their circumstances, and the places that they live and how they were raised.
Good evening, Mr. Hawkins.
How you doing, sir?
Well, thank you. I hope you are too.
I'm well.
The council is in the midst of the budget process. What are your budget priorities and how do you think they are currently reflected in the budget?
Far as budget, I would invest in the youth. And what I mean by investing in the youth, we need to give these kids places to go. We need recreation centers, more recreation centers. We need support in the schools. So as being also a fellow Baltimore City Public School teacher, a lot of these teachers don't have resources. So I would like to take some of that budget and apply it to the schools and give these teachers extra resources. You have one teacher teaching in a classroom, and he or she may have 25 to 30 students. Regardless on how skilled you are, majority of the times you cannot adequately approach and deal with every student the same way. Baltimore City right now, under 15% of our students in Baltimore City Public Schools are reading, writing, and counting on their grade level. These are the things that we need to focus on. We can't continue to focus on prison. We can't continue to focus on detention centers. We can't continue to focus on more and more police. No, it takes that investment. So if I'm looking at a budget, I'm looking at how can we actually invest in our communities? How can we actually invest in our people? And how can we actually invest in our kids?
All right, thank you. Would you like to give any closing statements?
My closing statement is, as a man, I stand here because I literally feel like I was born to help my people. I've lived in so many of the harshest conditions that some people have never experienced. So I relate to those people. When I go out in the street and I feed the homeless, I relate to those people because I was once that. When I see the people gnawing off on the corners, I relate to those people because my mother and father was that. When I see people struggling for housing, I relate to those people because I lived in an abandoned condominium where we didn't have running water or heat. I relate to these kids that get pushed along out of the system because I was once that child that everybody condemned and said Wesley wasn't going to be nothing. But I also relate to people who are walking, that are college graduates. They have jobs and they have careers, and I feel like if we invest in our people, then we can get further. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we'll have Mark Hunter. Is Mark Hunter here? We'll go right into Eric James. Is Eric James here? No, no Eric James. We'll keep going right along. Cynthia Johnson. Is Cynthia Johnson here? No. Rodney Leach? All right.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen.
Good evening. If you're ready, you can.
I am ready.
You probably should lift the mic up.
Thank you.
It's being recorded.
Is that good?
Yeah.
Good afternoon, and thank you for having me. My name is Rodney Leach. I am a lifelong city resident. I grew up in Claremont Homes, formerly a public housing community, now rebranded as the Vibrant Orchard Ridge, just off of Sinclair Lane, which is within the Second District. At the age of 10, I played football at Radicki Field for the Gardenville Gators, which is relaunching this year thanks to partnership with Community Partners. Some of you sit here before the board. My community involvement involves a program that I've ran for two consecutive years, which is Backpacks for Be More. It's helped to raise, helped to provide 1,000 fully packaged backpacks to Baltimore City Public School students. Also, for the second year consecutively, this past Thanksgiving, conducted a homeless food drive alongside NGH, which is a community partner. I've worked alongside many of the councilmen and councilwomen in this city and community associations, including the Seymour Community Association, which is also inside the Second District. My resume roles include many expertise in leadership, budget operations, and policy analyst. Currently, I'm the Director of Payroll and Centralized Scheduling for Maryland Live Casino Hotel. And I am a member of the National Association of Public Administrators. In this year, I was a candidate for the National Leadership Council, the Maryland Chapter, which they decided not to have one. I'll be applying again next year. In 2016, Baltimore elected eight new energetic members. Four of them sit inside of this room. Today, I strive to be the ninth new member installed to the city council.
We want to just jump right into questions?
Okay.
All right.
Can you describe your vision for the Second District?
Yes, my vision for the Second District is one where others see, where others may see addiction and unemployment. We see an untapped workforce and the hope for a better life. I envision a district where employment, homeownership, and long-term wealth are something that are common for all residents within the Second District.
I have a question. Being an educator in Baltimore City, I've been teaching 19 years. Where is your vision of education in the Second District?
Thank you. One of the top two priorities that I believe the Second District is facing is education. One of the two are education. The second, I've had the opportunity to speak to many constituents within the Second District and alongside the city, mostly in the campaigns that I've run in the last two elections. The second priority that constituents of District 2 have continuously voiced is the need to feel safe. The first is that during my listening tours across Baltimore and with the constituents of District 2, voters have voiced education as a top priority. As a councilman for District 2, accountability and providing quality education opportunities for all youth, no matter the zip code, will be a priority.
So what are your top two priorities for the, oh, I did that one, sorry. What should the city do to address public safety in the Second District? And how should the mandates of the U.S. Department of Justice Consent Decree factor into this?
Okay, thank you. The... The, under the consent decree, the City of Baltimore and the Baltimore Police Department must work with the communities to implement comprehensive policing strategies. We've heard that. We've dealt with that for almost three years now, since the consent decree began and, well, was investigated and initiated. I'm confident in the current Police Commissioner Harrison's ability, but it does not all rest on him. Public safety has to be a continuous priority that we each proactively achieve and work towards. I will continue forging relationships between the Baltimore City Police Departments and the other agencies with the resources needed to address other factors that contribute to public safety and the constituents and the public feeling unsafe. This includes improved lighting, trash collection, substance abuse, and citizen reentry.
Thank you.
Very good. What recommendations would you provide to get more community involvement in the residential community associations within the Second District with its large territorial area of two and one-half square miles?
Thank you. One of the things that, I'm a millennial. I think that's not a surprise to many of you. And millennials really rely on technology to be involved in things, and I think that there are other ways that we can get through to the youth who are younger than millennials, are millennials, or older than millennials in a way where we involve them in what's going on in the community. Sometimes we show up to these community events, and we have two, three, four of the same people. I've had the opportunity to go to hundreds of different community associations during my last campaign, and what we find is that it's usually the same involvement. And I think that we have to find new ways to get involved. As the District 2 councilperson, I would utilize many community development strategies to improve community development, including social planning and coalitions. Interest groups and constituents alike have an interest in a stronger, cleaner, and safer Baltimore. I would bring together people and organizations from throughout the community, including many of groups that may not normally work together.
All right.
As a council member? As a council member, what would your position be on any legislation that would create mandatory minimum sentences for criminal offenses?
Okay. Mandatory minimums for gun possession have been the subject of heated debate. I think that we've heard that in many of the council hearings that we've attended. I would respectfully consult with each peer councilman and councilwoman, as well as my constituents, before voting in support or opposition on any mandatory minimum. My priority when approaching mandatory minimums and my philosophy to mandatory minimum sentences will always be to avoid any situation that would be unlawful or return our city to harsh policies or unlawful situations that resulted in the consent decree.
The council is in the midst of the budget process. What are your budget priorities? And how do you think they are currently reflected in the budget?
All right, so the budget process was relatively smooth last year. I will continue to support the budgets that improve education, improve public safety, provide modest property tax, modest property tax cuts, and improve the quality of life for the people in Baltimore City.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Do you want to give closing statements?
Of course.
All right.
It's not about the academia. I hold a degree, a master's degree, from the University of Baltimore. It's not about political relationships with me. I'm from a family of two who are very hardworking. They weren't political inspirers. They vote, but they weren't, you know, they don't do this. It's not about community, and it's not about who fundraises the most. It's about the community and the people we represent. It's about the children who look up to us and feel the long-term effects tomorrow of the decisions that we make today. It's about moms, mothers of murdered sons. And so think, please, as you leave today, what happens if all we do is get excited about change, talk about change, and don't install a member that represents the change that will move Baltimore forward? What happens then?
Thank you.
Thank you.
I just want to acknowledge Mary Pat Clark from the 14th District, who's here. A legend in Baltimore City's hall. We'll go to the next person. Cynthia Johnson? She wasn't here. Oh, Camille Loya? Is Camille here? No. We'll go to the next person, Danielle McCray.
Good evening. First, I want to thank every member of this committee for taking your time and just giving back to us for this nomination process, so thank you. I am Danielle McCray. I'm born and raised in Baltimore City. Went to public schools. I'm a proud graduate of Baltimore Polytechnic Institute. There are two things that I learned growing up in Baltimore City. One was hard work. The other was a commitment to our community. I learned hard work from my great-grandmother at 1612 Gilmore Street when she taught me how to scrub her marble steps. In that small action, she also showed me how to take pride in my neighborhood. I learned a commitment of service to my community from my mom. As I grew up, I was 13, we door-knocked and passed out community meeting flyers. Not only did I learn a commitment of community at that time, I learned how to engage and listen to my neighbors and organize because collectively, we saved our recreation center from being closed. For the last five years, I've lived in the Waltherston community. I've also worked with our previous councilman, Brandon Scott, on policy and delivering high-quality constituent service. I've worked to resolve every issue that has been put in front of me as if it were my own. That's going to be from illegal dumping to street paving to making sure that a water bill was adjusted correctly for a senior on a fixed income. I love doing what I do. Y'all know me, and y'all know that this is the work that seriously I love. It comes from my heart, and I'm hoping that I can do it as your next councilwoman.
Perfect timing. We're going to step right into questions, and so we'll start with the first question from the panel.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Describe your vision for the Second District.
Our district is diverse. We want the same things that all communities want. We want strong schools where our children can get the education they need to be successful adults. A district where city services and utilities work. A district with thriving businesses from Bel Air Road to Highland Town, back to Pulaski. A district with thriving businesses from Bel Air Road to Hollentown, back to Pulaski. We want jobs and amenities where we live, with a strong local economy that enables us to reinvest in our community. A district where residents are engaged and empowered, because it's not just my vision, it's our vision, and that's what truly matters.
Good evening, Dani. What are the two top priorities facing the Second District?
For me, the two top priorities right now facing the Second District are public safety, and it's also restoring trust within our local government. First, for public safety, every community meeting, every event that I go to, we're talking about simple things. We're talking about a lack of service response from our police offices. Everyone deserves to feel safe within their communities. Reducing crime, improving police-community relations, and providing more resources to at-risk individuals to help prevent crime are always top of mind. Our city has been through some tough times, and many feel like their voices are not being heard. To restore trust in local government, I plan on continuing to be responsive, transparent, and continue working hard on behalf of our communities. From Sedonia to Frankfurt to Hollentown, I'm going to continue to do what I learned at a young age. I'm going to engage, and I'm going to listen.
Good evening, Ms. McCray.
Good evening, Mr. Carrisek.
Thank you. What should the city do to address public safety in the Second District? And how should the mandates of the U.S. Department of Justice Consent Decree factor into this?
Police safety is a complex issue. The lessons of the consent decree drive this point home. Restoring trust in policing is crucial to the goal of public safety, as is improving the outcomes, one that I already talked about, service response times. They are important to the residents of the Second District. As trust is restored through more constitutional policing and better leadership, I'll forge new and better partnerships between communities and police to improve these outcomes. I fought alongside our previous councilman, Brandon Scott, on policies like police redistricting and also on the auxiliary unit. That will help greatly, both of those, with the issues that we face.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
As a council member, what would your position be on any legislation that would create mandatory minimum sentences for criminal offenses?
This could not be easier. I do not support mandatory minimums. They don't do anything to deter crime or to reduce crime, and that's been shown from multiple studies. I believe the judges should have the discretion, full discretion, in that case. What should be mandatory is making sure every child who is applying for youth works can get a job. Also, state-of-the-art recreation centers, as well as jobs that pay a good wage and affordable housing. Those should be mandatory to me, not mandatory minimums.
Okay. The council is in the midst of the budget process. What are your budget priorities, and how do you think that they are currently reflected in the budget?
My three budget priorities are public safety, their education, and is taking care of our seniors. For public safety, we know that the city, excuse me, we know that the city has to invest in technology for our police department to be in compliance with the consent decree. And that is reflected in the preliminary 2020 budget. For my second thing on education, we have to make sure that the city keeps its commitment to the current commission and funds our schools. Last, seniors are important to me. I have two grandmothers on fixed incomes. We have to ensure that we are committed to appropriating dollars to senior programming and any assistance with city services that our seniors need.
Next question. Describe your vision for our Second District.
I'm sorry, Ms. Barbara, that was my first, that was the first question y'all gave me.
Yeah, that's, so we're... Yeah, that was the last question. So we're going to conclude with questions, and if you would like to give us some closing statements, that'll work.
Again, I want to say thank you to the members of committee for giving your time to this process. I know our communities, I know our residents, and I know our issues, and I know this because I live here, and they are the same issues that I face, from transportation to illegal dumping to public safety. The Second District residents deserve the highest level of representation. We need someone fighting for us to ensure that when we are no longer here, that the quality of life for future generations are improved drastically. I've been responsive, I've been consistent, and I've shown up for our communities. For the last five years, I have given all that I have to all that I do for our residents. My name is Danielle McCray, and I'm hoping to continue that work as your next councilwoman. Thank you.
Thank you. We are actually going to go into a fifteen- to twenty-minute recess, and so we're going to recess and come back. Good evening, everyone. We're going to reconvene and finish this hearing out. We're going to start with Nicholas Miles. If Nicholas Miles is here, perfect. So it's just going to be the same format as we did before. We are actually going to, if you want to do opening statements, questions, and closes out.
Well, good evening. My name is Nicholas Miles. I'm a lifelong Baltimorean, somebody who was born and raised in the city of Baltimore. I received my education from Baltimore City Public Schools. I'm a proud graduate of the prestigious Paul Lawrence Dunbar High School. I truly understand the little state of process by obtaining, I obtained my degree in history education from Bowie State University. Mostly, I understand the most, two important things needed in this position. That's how, that's knowing when to listen and when to lead. With me working my entire professional career dealing with youth services, I really, really understand out the needs of our young people. As a former youth advocate, finding jobs, working for the city of Baltimore, my time as a youth director at the YMCA, focusing on activities and recreations, two years as a Baltimore City schoolteacher, really, really working with our young people, and currently in my role as a high school administrator at St. Francis Academy. In my humble opinion, in this position, you know, you need somebody who has a clear vision and a professional experience to move our district forward. Thank you.
We're going to go right into questions. We'll just start from this side again and go on down.
Describe your vision of the Second District.
My vision for the Second District is the vision of other citizens. Pretty much, we need somebody that's going to come in, listen, really, really see the concerns, have a plan, and I think anything in Baltimore focuses around two things, that's education and activities for our young people. We do those two things, I think you can really, really do some things to change the city. I think that'll cover crime, I think it'd get the family involved, and pretty much, it'd bring a holistic approach to solving the problems of our city.
So what would you say are your top two priorities for the District?
I think the top priority right now is crime, and I think that's number one. I think if you're a resident of Baltimore City, how do we solve crime? So in that, the two, the two main bullet points would be education, providing these kids a positive education, you know, somewhere where they can get, have world-class facilities and a world-class education. Training programs, that's a part of education, for the kids that don't want to go to college, having some kind of trade, focusing on those programs. And then for the younger kids, recreation activities, including youth sports and also other activities.
Okay. Hi. What should the city do to address public safety in the Second District? And how should the mandates of the U.S. Department of Justice Consent Decree factor into this?
Okay, as far as the Northeast District is the largest district in the city. So I think our police officers in our district are at a disadvantage because the district is too large. So I think they need to, they need to redistrict the districts to make our district smaller to give our policemen a chance to really, really be able to cover our district.
So, Mr. Miles, as a council member, what would your position be on any legislation that would create mandatory minimum sentences for criminal offenses?
I don't believe in mandatory sentences. I believe in rehabilitation. I think we need to focus on what's, what's the root of the problem? How do we rehabilitate these criminals to be productive citizens? And that goes back to, you know, if we get them education, if we get them training, and if we, you know, provide activities for the young folks, we won't have, you know, as much crimes as we do in the city.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, how you doing, how you doing, first thing?
All right, I'm great, and yourself?
Excuse me, let me take this now.
Yeah, be comfortable.
Skookey. All right, there you go. I got it now. All right. The council is in the midst of the budget process. What are your budget priorities, and how do you think they are currently reflected in the budget?
I think the budget should focus on two things. One, education. We need to put more money into Baltimore City Public Schools, especially in our district. We got too many, too many families looking outside of our district for educational opportunities. So what can we do to improve the schools in our district? You know, what kind of programs do we need to have in our district to make our schools better? And two, activities, you know, you ride around in the district, see a lot of young folks out, you know, in the street with nothing to do. So pretty much having activities, what do these young folks want? You know, are we talking to the young folks? Are we seeing activities that they need? Are we providing those activities? And if we are, do they know about them? So I think education is one, you know, and with education, there's job training, and then two, recreational activities.
All right, those were the five questions. Would you like to give us closing statements? We're ready to listen.
Sure. I thank y'all for y'all's time. It's a pleasure to be here, and I would, you know, work really, really hard for the Second District. Thank you.
Thank you. The next person we have is Ms. Sharita Obiara? Obiaria, yes. Whenever you're ready.
Good evening. My name is Sharita Daniels Obiara. I am a trained mediator, an EEO counselor, a paralegal, a volunteer, and a twelve-year homeowner in the Second District. I am a dedicated public servant of over fifteen years who believes that the citizens of Baltimore deserve a world-class city. I bring experience working with the police and courts that gives me insight into fighting crime. I bring experience with the Fire Department of D.C. that gives me insight into city services and public safety. I bring the conflict resolution experience from being a volunteer mediator to help resolve conflicts and help people work together for a common goal. I bring strategic planning and budget experience that can help the Second District get to where it needs to be. My experience negotiating and administering government contracts can help the city save money. My employment law experience can help Baltimore City to be a world-class employer. My experience covers federal government, state government, and local government. It has given me a wealth of knowledge that I will use for the good of the city that I have chosen to call my home for the last twelve and a half years. Thank you.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
Oh, excuse me, evening.
Evening.
Describe your vision for the Second District.
Well, my vision for the Second District is to have a safe community where we empower the people by developing them educationally, activating them politically, and strengthening them economically. This includes a variety of public and private partnerships that can transform vacant and abandoned properties into desirable living spaces, increase homeownership rates, reduce crime, and provide financial education. It includes increased access to higher education and technical programs for those who might not want to go to college, and it includes opening businesses and giving people the tools that they need for their businesses to thrive.
What are the two top priorities facing the Second District?
My top priority for the Second District is to make it a sought-after place to live. That includes what everybody else mentioned about addressing crime, but it also includes my second priority, which is restoring faith in government. If we all have a place where people are safe, where they feel welcomed, and where they're offered opportunities to improve their lives in a supportive environment, they will come. And one of the things that we can do is to help people improve their situations and not think that life has to be like it has always been. When I talk to the people in the community, many feel hopeless. They feel that their votes don't really do anything and that no one cares. I think that having a responsive city councilwoman who cares about lifting people out of poverty, who cares about giving people hope, and empowering them to truly be more, will make a difference.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Obiara? Oh, I'm sorry. Obiaria?
Obiara, yes.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
What should the city do to address public safety in the Second District? And how should the mandates of the U.S. Department of Justice Consent Decree factor into this?
The city should address the causes, not the effects. There are a variety of family issues that sometimes lead, especially juveniles, to crime. And in fact, when I was working in the court, there was a one-eight-year-old boy, a sweet boy, but he was there on his third shoplifting charge, and the judge asked him, "Why do you keep doing this? You're a good kid." And he said, "My mom leaves for weeks at a time, and there's no food in the house, and I know if I go to jail, I'll get three meals a day." That kind of thing should not happen, and that is one of the reasons why I believe we should address the causes, not the effects. I also saw some juvenile and adult repeat offenders who just didn't care. But rehabilitating or punishing them appropriately so that the community would be safer would be my goal. And as it relates to the consent decree, a lot of the things that I would recommend are already a part of it. Police should be held to a high standard, and police conduct should be addressed swiftly and in a way that is a deterrent to other conduct, and that will reinforce community trust and community cooperation, which will then reduce crime.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
As a council member, what would your position be on any legislation that would create mandatory minimum sentences for criminal offenses?
Well, I would have to look at the particular legislation. I don't want situations like the Stanford rapist who got only six months after being caught in the act of raping an unconscious woman. That is not in the best interest of public safety. However, working in the courts, I have seen mandatory minimums be used as weapons against underprivileged and minority defendants as well. So I would weigh the particular legislation and decide my position on that piece of legislation based on its merits.
Okay. The council is in the midst of a budget process. What are your budget priorities, and how do you think they are currently reflected in the budget?
Okay. My priorities are generally whatever I think will make the city and our district better. One very important one is recreation centers and summer jobs for youth. Keeping young people busy lowers crime, period. Giving them opportunities to make legitimate money lowers crime, period. Lower crime means lower detention costs. Um, when I was working in the courts, it was $60,000 per year, per child, to put them in the highest level of juvenile detention. And it's probably higher now with inflation. Every dollar spent on recreation centers and summer jobs for youths saves money in the long run. And I feel that those priorities should be assigned more money in the 2020 budget.
Thank you for answering all the questions. Would you have any closing statement?
I do, thank you. I believe that in order to expect a change, you need to make a change. Far too often in Baltimore City, if someone is related to a particular person or has been mentored by a particular person or went to a certain high school, they're assumed to be the best candidate. That has led us to the situation that we're in. I believe a change is necessary. I bring a lot of experience that will benefit the citizens of the second district, and I believe that with God's help, I can be that change. Thank you.
Thank you. Cassie Richardson? Bobby Joe Sims?
Good evening, everybody.
Good evening.
Thank you for taking all the time to hear us, hear all of us. I know there's quite a, quite a bit of us. And I want to thank all of the fellow applicants for caring for our district as much as I do. Okay. My name is Bobby Joe Sims. I'm 48 years old. Unlike most of the applicants, I am not a lifelong Baltimorean. I was born and raised in Pittsburgh, lived in Annapolis, and relocated to Highland Town two years ago. Once we moved here, we quickly jumped into everything the community had to offer. We are on the Community Association. I am on the Board of the Community Association, just recently made Secretary of the Community Association. I am head of the Event Committee. I try to strive to do as much as I can in our neighborhood as possible. I belong on a tree pit pilot project that a couple people have formed within our association. I have planned our polling place party at Highland Town 237 in the past elections. I have run our Christmas party, and then this July, I am setting up our first-ever Highland Town Crab Feast. So with that being said, I love to do more for our community, and that's why I'm seeking this position.
All right, we're just going to jump right into questions.
Hi.
Hi.
Could you describe your vision for the second district?
Yes. My vision in the overall spectrum doesn't really matter. Uh, my communities, the leaders, and the youth, it's their vision that will become my vision. I am here to work with them to the best of my ability and listen to them, every single one of them. I will meet with every community association and committee and youth group, hear their thoughts and their needs. Together, we'll continue with the progress with the programs President Brandon Scott put in place, such as Second Reads, Second Lunches, Second Thursdays, and To Be Fit. I love this city, and I believe in its people. So with that being said, helping people with their visions and ideas will move us all forward. Our people have lost trust in our government. I am not a politician, nor am I from a political background. I am one of them. Being a, being a councilwoman for the people and the youth of this great diverse second district, I am a two-year breast cancer survivor and fight every day, and will do the same with my district. Our district's motto will be, become second to none, and we will all share the same vision.
I thought I heard that whistle thing. What are the two top priorities facing the second district?
Two priorities. My first priority would be our youth and quality education. We need more rec centers, safe areas to play, and most of all, our children need to be heard. Last night, I attended the taxpayers' meeting here, and a young man, he was 17 years old, stood up and asked the council for help and for the kids to be, be heard. Kids are not being heard nowadays. I believe that they need to be heard because they are people just like everyone else. The kids are our future, and if we don't start with them and find stuff for them to do and engage with them, well, we know how that's going to turn out, so. My second priority is public safety. We need to get more block watch programs. We also need to train our police to be more community, community-friendly. We need more police on foot patrol. We have many people sitting on stoops and three police cars sitting in a 7-Eleven when they could easily walking around, talking to their neighbors, getting to know their neighbors. Those are my two priorities.
Thanks for that, Bobby. What, what should the city do to address public safety in the second district? And how should the mandates of the US Department of Justice consent decree factor into this?
Public safety, like I said before, needs to be addressed at a little bit of a different outlook. I do believe we need to bring community back together with foot patrols and more community-friendly police officers. Police officers have a very hard job, but they need to be trained how to interact with people on a daily basis. People need to learn how to trust them. They've lost trust. The consent decree, excuse me, asks for transparency. They have to be held at an accountable standard. And I think with them being able to speak with the neighbors and neighbors getting to know the police officers on a daily basis will make it much easier for them to start trusting our police force. And maybe we won't have the transparency issues that we have now.
Thank you.
As a council member, what would, I'm sorry. As a council member, what would your position be on any legislation that would create mandatory minimum sentences for criminal offenses?
Just like some of my fellow applicants said earlier, legislation would have to be, ways of piece by piece. We would need to have it reviewed. I do not believe in the mandatory minimum sentence. I don't think that it prevents or deters crime. Studies do show that judges have no options with this legislation. They can't take certain things into consideration. They can't take the mental health of a person into consideration. They can't take the need for drug treatment into consideration. They can't take into consideration their prior record. One study in this legislation shows that African-American men are sent to prison at a rate much more higher than white men. There is no easy answer on this topic. Community service, volunteer work can also be a few options added instead of the minimum sentence legislation. We will need to pick our battles wisely on this topic. Thank you.
Good afternoon.
Evening.
Excuse me. The council is in the midst of the budget process. What are your budget priorities and how do you think they are currently reflected in the budget?
Education needs to find more funds. As we said before, the children are our future, and our education system is lacking with money. We are spending so much money on policing. That doesn't mean that we don't need more police, but they need to police differently and more effectively. Foot patrols, community watch blocks that interact with the police, the ever-growing police budget isn't producing any better results. Recs, parks, schools, and jobs for our youth should not be forgotten in this budget. Policing and public safety go hand in hand, but funding for our youth can make a huge impact on public safety in a positive way.
Thank you. Thank you. That concludes the five questions. If you want to make a closing statement?
Sure. Again, thank you all for taking your time out to listen to all of us. We're all here because we care. Um, and as I said before, I love this city, and I want to do more for this city. When I was ill, I sat back and I thought, "Well, what am I going to leave behind?" Okay, I'm a mother of three boys. I raised them. They're, they're still alive and well. I have a wonderful husband. I have great friends. I'm friends to my great friends. But what am I going to leave behind? And I realized when this opportunity came available, this is what I want to do, is I want to work for my neighbors and my community and help them to be happy like I am and fill out their visions.
Well, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. The next person we'll have is Dexter Walker. Dexter?
Good evening, everyone. It's a pleasure to be here. Good to see everyone. My name is Dexter Walker. I'm a lifelong Baltimore City resident, father of two, grandfather of three. Um, I have been working with community associations in Baltimore City since 1999. I have also been volunteering in different community associations with Baltimore City since the mid-'80s. Um, I became involved in communities with my mother because she was the Vice President and on the Board of the Harlem Park Neighborhood Association. So back in the mid-'80s, moms used to drag me out, and we used to deliver the flyers and volunteer for all the community events. And that's how I became active in the community. Um, my primary goal is to try to uplift the second district. It's one of the strongest districts in the city, but we still could use improvement. Um, one of the other things that I would like to mention is that, growing up in Baltimore City, I spent the majority of my youth living in two zip codes, 21205, 21217. So those are two of the most distressed neighborhoods in Baltimore City. During my lifetime, I have seen plenty of people, including some of my friends, make bad decisions that got them into some serious trouble. But with the right kind of guidance, I believe that those decisions could have been made better. So I just want to thank you for allowing me to be here this evening.
So we're going to jump right into the question component of this, and so I'm going to let the panel take over the questions. Hello.
Good evening.
Describe your vision for the second district.
Well, the second district is strong. But the thing about the second district is all neighborhoods are not on the same level. Some neighborhoods have problems that are unique to their own neighborhoods. So in order to do that, I believe that we would have to address each and every individual community association separately to find out what their concerns are and what their problems are. Currently, I'm the Vice President of the East Rosemark Community Association, and I know we don't have the same problems that Bel Air Edison has. So we need to tailor certain programs toward Bel Air Edison, tailor certain programs toward Glenn Han Bellhar, tailor certain programs toward Harlem Park, because you just can't throw a blanket over the second district and think that it's going to solve everything. It's not. Basically, like I said, you need to get with these community associations on an individual basis and find out exactly what is it that they need, and then you can work from there.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mr. Walker. What would you, what are the two top priorities facing the second, second district?
Well, two of the most common priorities facing the second district, education, public safety. Um, let's start with education. I believe that a strong elementary education is the key to success throughout life. It is, it makes the difference between you being accepted into the University of Maryland or Harvard or graduating from high school not even knowing how to read and write. That's the main issue. Quality of life is determined by the basic education you get when you're at the elementary level. Because that way, you learn critical thinking skills, problem skills. You learn how to, uh, deal with certain situations that can progress. So basically, you just can't, um, have one uniform thing for everybody. Basic ed- education, elementary on a level, we need funding for that. Not only the rec centers, but after-school programs, uh, after, extended daycare, tutoring, it all ties in.
Good evening. What should the city do to address public safety in the second district? And how should the mandates of the US Department of Justice consent decree factor into this?
Well, once again, with public safety, you just can't throw a blanket over the second district and think it's going to work for every neighborhood. Um, as I mentioned earlier, some neighborhoods need more attention than others. Um, in public safety, we need to get more officers on the force. I understand that the Baltimore City Police Department is having recruiting issues. But we can't do it without the numbers. Not only that, we have to break this stop-snitching culture in Baltimore City. The police can't do it alone. They need help from the neighbors. They need the neighbors calling in tips, using the hotlines. But most people are afraid to do so because of this culture that we have in Baltimore City right now. It needs to be broken. The consent decree is a template. You know, basically, we have to follow that template. It, it, it will restore confidence in the police department. It will restore trust in the police department. But we all have to work together. Police cannot solve crimes alone. We, the community, the residents of Baltimore City, and the police department need to work as one unit.
So what should the city do to address public safety in the second district? And how should the mandates of the US Department of Justice consent decree factor into this?
Well, once again, um, addressing the, the public safety issue in the second district, like I said, certain areas need more attention than others. So maybe that, you know, we can get all the community associations together. We can get all the presidents together, all the vice presidents together.
But I'm going to stop you. I'm sorry to interrupt you. We actually are going to go to the next question because that was the repeat of the question. I'm so, I'm sorry about that.
It's easy to do. As a council member, what would your position be on any legislation that would create mandatory minimum sentences for criminal offenses?
Well, I believe I'm going to go against the grain with this. I do feel as though that we do need mandatory minimum sentencing for some crimes here in Baltimore City, especially the most violent ones. Because in order to make Baltimore City a safer place, some individuals have to be removed off the streets. As long as they are on the streets, they will continue to wreak havoc in our neighborhoods. They will continue to intimidate our neighbors. So yes, I am a proponent for mandatory minimum sentencing for certain crimes.
All right. Thanks for that. The council is in the midst. It's in the midst of the budget process, be aware. What are your budget priorities and how do you think they are currently reflected in the budget?
Well, I'm not actually privileged to the budget process that's going on right now. But I will say the main thing for me is basic elementary education. I do need, I do believe that we need to properly fund elementary schools. Because getting young kids, getting kids when they are young and instilling values and morals in them will only take hold as they get older. There are a lot of kids out here running around the street that don't have that. They don't have anybody to teach them any values. They don't have anybody to teach them any morals. They're not learning from the teachers in school. They're learning from other students in the school. So that's, um, what I can say on that topic.
Thank you. Uh, it's closing statements. Would you like to give any closing?
Well, um, basically, I'd like to say that I am a lifelong resident of Baltimore City. Um, I have been working with many community associations over the years, and I've heard their concerns. I've heard their complaints. I've actually been there with them through their concerns and complaints. And if I am elected or given the position, I will promise to do everything that I possibly can to work with each and every individual community association in the second district to make sure that they have exactly what it is that they are asking for.
Thank you, uh, Mr. Dexter. I just appreciate your time. I just want to correct one thing, only because we're videotaping. Other than that, I would have just pulled it over to the side. You are a part of Baltimore City. You are privy to the budget. Uh, you can come even next week, and we'll be in budget season to the third to the fifth. You can pull it on the internet. I just want to be clear for, just on the record, because people are watching this, so I want them to know about it.
Yes, ma'am. Appreciate it.
Third to the seventh, we're in budget. It's open to the public.
Thank you.
So we'll go with our next one. Um, Gary Williams? Gary Williams. Gary Williams, last but not least.
Good evening.
Good evening.
So I'm Gary Williams. I live in the Seedmark Community. I'm a lifelong Baltimoreian. Bought my house in Seedmark in 2016, live with my wife and two kids. I'm an avid gardener, martial artist, avid gym attendee. Also, I work in, at Baltimore Core, really doing the work around how do we build future leaders in community and get young adults civically engaged. And so through a 10-month-long nonprofit apprenticeship experience, running a program called Public Allies at Baltimore Core. My life has really been dedicated to my community. I started out as a youth organizer with Youth is Resources, which gave youth-led, which was a youth-led grant-making program, giving grants to young people who were all across the city during organizing. And for me, that spoke to the value around really serving my community, watching my mom and my grandmother be involved in community. My grandmother fought housing segregation in the sixties here in Baltimore, living on 1411 Winston Avenue. My mom lived in Pig Town and was the first African-American to serve on their community association as their president. And so for me, it's in my family, it's in my blood. I believe in this city. And so for me, coming home after college and really saying, how do I create a career and model my life in which I'm serving my city and serving my community, it was incredibly important to me.
We're going to jump right into questions?
Yes.
And so we'll go to the panel for the questions.
Ms. Scrap?
Describe your vision of the Second District.
So when I think of my vision for the Second District, I think of this kind of five things that I think are very important. One is high-quality schools. And so for me, recognizing that, for me, education was my way out of poverty and recognizing that that is important. And so how do we provide the best educational experience for young people in the district? Really thinking about business development, especially outside of just restaurants, how we let people, you know, start their businesses. A lot of my friends are having issues accessing capital to start their businesses. I think also, young people being involved in out-of-school-time programming, for me, that's super important, whether it's, you know, looking at STEM, whether it's, you know, being civically engaged, whether it's arts and music. Young people are assets. They have skills, they have dreams, and these opportunities allow them to do that. And then I also think about how we just, all as citizens, engage in community, whether through community associations or even other informal ways.
What are the two top priorities facing the Second District?
So for me, I think the two top priorities, one is schools. A lot of my neighbors, especially those with kids, are really concerned about the quality of education. I think the Second District does have some good elementary schools, but then thinking about as kids get older and moving through middle school and high school, how are we improving that educational experience for them? I think for me, the second issue is safety, the second priority for me is safety. A lot of folks talk about issues around public safety and community, and how do they feel safe? And that's a determining factor around, you know, do they stay in the district long-term? Or do they move, you know, to another district or even outside of the city? And so those, I think, are two important priorities.
Okay. Thank you, Gary. What should the city do to address public safety in the Second District? And how should the mandate of the U.S. Department of Justice Consent Decree factor into this?
And so, so first, I really think that community-police relationships are critical. When people distrust the police, they don't call them when crime happens, they're less likely to report tips. And I've seen that in my, in my own experience with my neighbors. I think it's important for us to have a civilian review board that has strong teeth, that really is able to hold police accountable. Also thinking about how a police walk in the streets, interacting with residents. So things around, like trainings around equity, and then how are we also ensuring that good police officers stay on the force and bad police officers are removed from the force? And then I also think about how do we welcome returning citizens and how do we integrate them into community? Not only just with jobs, but how are we reconnecting them with their families, getting them civically engaged, so that way they understand that there's opportunities outside of a life of crime, and they take advantage of those opportunities.
Thank you.
Okay, Gary. Thank you. The fourth question, as a council member, what would your position be on any legislation that would create mandatory minimum sentence for criminal offenses?
That's a no for me. I do not support mandatory minimums. I think that mandatory minimums disproportionately affect people of color. There's no data that shows that mandatory minimums actually reduce or deter crime. And so I'm against that. I think there are lots of other ways in which we can reduce crime, and mandatory minimums is just not a method I would use.
Thanks.
I get the number five.
You get the number five.
Here we go. I'm on track. That's what retirement does for you. I'm enjoying it and loving it.
I got a long way to go.
The commitment that I have to my community and the people around me. But anyway, let's move forward. That was off the record. The council is in the midst of the budget process. What are your budget priorities? And how do you think they are, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, how do you think they are currently reflected in the budget?
So for me, an important budget priority is really thinking about how are we making investments in young people? So if we say young people are assets, right? And we say that that's important, our budget needs to reflect that. And the dollars we're spending and how we're showing citizens that those dollars are leading to specific outcomes for those young people. And so I think, for me, that's very important. I think a second thing is really for us to figure out, how do we make our budgetary process much more participatory for citizens? There are lots of models across the country that looks at citizen participation and budget creation. And so how do we do that in a way that builds transparency and trust? You know, but everyone always talks about, they don't want to know about the numbers, or they do, and it's just murky. And I think we can do a lot around that to make sure that that transparency comes into existence.
So that concludes the questions. If you want to give a closing statement?
Yes. So I believe in Baltimore. I believe in its citizens. I believe in my neighbors. I believe in my community. And that's really why I'm here tonight and applied for this position. I saw that this was an opportunity to continue my lifelong service to Baltimore, to continue my service to my community, and see that as a great opportunity. I think what I bring to this opportunity is intellectual curiosity, of really wanting to deep-dive and learn. I'm also a good listener and really view community as assets. And so really think, how do we engage the average citizen? Because citizens have ideas, right? And how do we bring those to the forefront and make sure that we listen? I'm a consensus builder, and I really, I think what sets me apart is really a strong focus on equity. So how are the things that we're doing in city council affecting everybody? You know, from the poorest person to the wealthiest person, is it making their lives better? And if it's not making the most vulnerable people's lives better, like, we really need to reconsider that. And so that is why I want to be here. Thank you.
Is there anyone that came in late who wanted to interview for this position that we might have missed?
So first off, thank you to everyone for coming out tonight. You know, it's really heartening to see this room full of people who want to be a part of making this city better. With all that Baltimore has gone through in the last couple of weeks and months and years, to see this level of civic participation, to see this many people, to see this diversity in the room of folks who want to be a part of making not only the Second District, but our city better, it's just incredibly heartening for me and for Chairwoman Sneed and for this whole panel. So from the bottom of my heart, thank you. And the thing I want to say is, even if you are not selected tonight, please, 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 remain engaged. We all need to be in it together for our city. And so I hope that everybody, regardless of whether you get the position or not, continues to show up, just like you did tonight. And with that, I'm going to pass it back to Chairwoman Sneed, who's going to explain the next portion.
Thank you, Councilman. So we will now take a vote. The committee staff will pass out a ballot, which will list all applicants for this vacancy. Each committee member is to select one applicant and return the ballot to the committee staff, Mr. Green, who's now passing out, passing out the paper. He will tally the results and announce them. In order for an applicant to be recommended to the full council for a vote, they must receive a majority of the votes from the committee, which is, in this case, seven votes. If no applicant receives seven votes in the first round of voting, we will pass out another set of ballots and continue voting until a nominee receives at least seven votes. And before we vote, I just want to see if any of our committee members have any, they want to say anything, because you've been a part of this process. We appreciate you. We thank you for your time, your dedication to the community, your dedication and commitment to Baltimore City. So if you want to say anything to address our candidates and anyone that's in the audience, please take this time to do so.
I'm Barbara Jackson, and I thank you for coming out here tonight. It's quite a privilege, but it's also giving back to all of us who serve as presidents or team leaders or whoever in our communities. Because oftentimes, you will find there aren't as many people in the community meetings that need to be there. And to have you here tonight is really great. And I want you to give yourselves an applause, and I'm going to applaud you.
I would also like to thank each and every person who is going for this position. I'm just in awe of each of you. It is just inspiring to know there's so much commitment to our city and so much hope. And you are great. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Rita Cruz, President of Bella Edison Community Association. I commend all of you for coming out, sharing with us your expertise, what you're willing to do if you are selected for this position. Even if you don't get it, you can still continue to try. And again, thank you for loving District Two.
So committee members, we're, let's go ahead and vote. Please put your name on the top of the ballot. And once you put your name on the ballot and you decide who you'll vote for, Mr. Green will be collecting the ballots.
We have nine for Ms. McCray, one for Glenda Curtis, and one for Gary Williams.
This concludes the process for our vacancy nomination. Thank you all for coming out. Please look around your seats to make sure you gather everything. And again, thank you for your time here tonight. And, I'm sorry, and one more thing. Okay. Danielle McCray, having received the majority of the vote, the committee will be recommended to the full city council on June 11, 2019, meeting of the city council. Should the council approve the nomination, she will take the seat at the meeting. Thank you to everyone again who applied for the seat and to everyone who came out tonight. Thank you. Good night.